Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners, January 28th, 2025. Regular scheduled meeting will begin by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Brad Wright, followed with the invocation by Commissioner Truman Tinsley III. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we're here today to ask you your blessings and guidance in the performance of our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us to recognize and solve the problems that are presented, make our solutions fair and just to the best interests of everyone. Help us to overcome our shortcomings and keep us united as a team to work for the betterment of the city and its people. We pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We have the agenda that's been presented. Do we have a motion to approve? Commissioner Tinsley with a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor of the agenda, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Moving on to Presentations and Delegations. Item one is to recognize Bradley Durden, Geospatial Systems Administrator, as the 2024 Annual Strongest Link in the Chain Award recipient. Brian Haynes, Director of GIS and Gib Cotton, Chief Technology Officer, will address. Welcome. This is a great night to celebrate.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Welcome.
So this is Bradley Durden. He transferred over to IT a little over a year ago. And in that time, it's been a whirlwind, but he's implemented some really high-profile systems for us, from our work order system to the city app that just came out a couple of weeks ago. But...
I was telling them about that today.
It's fabulous, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's fabulous.
I was gonna tell the rest of the board about that today.
It's all this guy. All this guy. And, you know, to your point, I think, you know, that's what really stood out to me the most about Bradley is how all these things he's done, how much it's touched other people's lives, both at the city and citizens, and, you know, improved communications and improved efficiencies to help us better serve the citizens. And he's done all of that with a kind and gentle nature that is just really inspiring. So, thank you, Bradley.
Good evening, everyone. I also wanted to speak about Bradley Durden tonight. As many of you all know, like Gib said, he is in our IT department. Bradley, before that, worked with us in GIS for five years, and before that was an intern for four years. Also, many people don't know Bradley used to go to school for a nursing degree was his original path. And somehow, he fell in love with maps. Who wouldn't, obviously? And he later went on to add a master's degree in IT. He has a Geospatial Systems Administrator title now where he helps both the IT department and GIS as well. And it's helped us to really upgrade and make our GIS, you know, really just racing compared to what it used to do. So, we thank him for that. We also like to thank the other members of the city that contributed to his nomination. We had an overwhelming number of people who added their comments to the nomination for Brad as well, as part of this team up to help nominate him for the annual strongest link. We're all very proud of him. It's very deserving, and we wish him congratulations.
That's awesome. So Bradley, would you like to... Well, before you say anything, just to give you an example, if you get a chance to go out and look at the agenda, you'll see all these testimonies. But the one that's short and sweet that says Bradley is a rock star. Our team has certainly appreciated him throughout this process. So, I mean, you are a rock star. Your golf needs some work, and Commissioner Cord may help you a little bit on that. But we'd love for you to say a few words and then introduce your family and guests that are here to celebrate with you.
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for this honor. And really, I just truly like working for the city. I love it, and I want to continue to do so. So, thank you all very much.
Wonderful. And your family?
Uh, my family...
Would you like to introduce your family?
Yes. We've got pretty much my whole family. We've got my mom here in the middle, my aunt Janay right there with her husband Reese. My stepdad is recording this. And then my grandfather right here, and my two cousins.
Wonderful.
Somebody in the back raising their hand.
Somebody...
Oh, and then my other aunt Jessica, and my other little cousin.
Wonderful. All right.
Thank you.
And thank you, gentlemen, for facilitating the nomination and...
Yes, sir. Thank you. Our pleasure.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Moving into item two, we would like to recognize Commissioner Cynthia Reed Ward for receiving the Certificate of Dedication from the Georgia Municipal Association. Recipients of the Certificate of Dedication have completed at least 276 hours of training, including at least 108 hours from a required list, 18 hours of which must be from the Advanced Leadership Track and the Robert E. Knox Jr. Municipal Leadership Institute. After obtaining the Certificate of Dedication, officials must complete nine hours of continuing education each year to maintain the certificate. I'm on the municipal training board, and I have great news for you, Ms. Ward. We recognized you this past week, but you have an opportunity in the very near future to earn the next level that we're about to introduce, 400 hours. So you have a new goal and a new target. But we also, we brought out the new logo for the Municipal Training Institute this past year. And so I'd like to present you with a token for you to wear in your lapel, just a little gold... Oh, I'm sorry. A little pin there that you can wear just to remember the special occasion and what you do for us, and we're very proud. Commissioner Tinsley was also recognized this week for the... Which level was it this week?
Whatever's below her.
The dedication. So each...
Distinction.
Distinction. There you go. So all of our elected officials, as well as other government officials, have opportunities to go to different trainings and learn how to be better elected officials and, as I say, plagiarize great ideas from other communities and also learn what not to do from other communities. So it's always great. So congratulations. Moving into Citizen Comments. At this time, the mayor opens the floor to comments from the audience. Comments should relate to a specific agenda item not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or to a concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Commission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum for the unlimited expression of opinion. Subject to the Citizens' Comment Policy adopted on February 13, 2024 and posted for public views, all speakers shall be limited to three minutes, which will be strictly followed and enforced. The mayor reserves the right to limit comments to matters germane to city business and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. So with that being said, is there anybody on my left side like to come before the board? Anybody on my left side? Is there anybody on my right side like to come before the board?
We've got somebody in the back.
Welcome. Hi, Ms. Morrison. Welcome. If you could please state your name and address for the record, please.
All right. Tina Marie Morrison, Kentucky Avenue. Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
As most of you know, I had the opportunity to attend this morning's Commissioners' Workshop meeting with you guys. It was very informative. There was a lot of things discussed. I do appreciate the opportunity to sit in and learn with you guys. As most on this board are aware, over the last four years, I've consistently spoken at city commission meetings in an attempt to work with the City of Griffin pertaining to policies which affect people with disabilities. This evening, I'm here as a mother. I do not know 22-year-old Andre Casey. However, I am the mother of a 22-year-old young man who resides near the area where this incident occurred between Mr. Casey and the Griffin Police Department. I've read so many comments on social media, in a sense, not just blaming Andre, but also blaming the culture. I mean, even people saying, "Change the stereotype." Through email, I've shared with this board that my 22-year-old son is a productive member of this community, has lived independently in his own apartment for two years since the age of 20, pays rent and utilities that supports this city's budget, receives no financial assistance from any government entity or anybody. However, as my son has recently disputed a $10.79 yard waste fee for service not being rendered by the Griffin Power, the City of Griffin has threatened to disconnect all of his undisputed utility services, which are paid in full. So it would seem they can't win for losing. Because no matter whether our young people do right or wrong, they're still at the mercy of this government and can be subjected to unethical practices, which isn't right. At some point, this Board of Commission has to recognize that enough is enough. By failing to hold employees accountable and stop being complicit by failing to hold employees accountable to knowing their own policies, whether it's search and rescue, search and arrest, I mean, or utility policies. Your employees should know what their own policies are. I shouldn't have to come up here and consistently say, "This is happening, this is happening," and have to wait months and months for audits to take place and continue to be overcharged and threatened with disconnection if we don't pay a $10.00 fee but pay the balance of the bill. I also just want to add that as you guys discuss substandard housing cleanliness and code enforcement, there's a huge disconnect. I don't think you understand what people are dealing with. I know a 70-year-old woman in Fairmont who has not had work in HVAC for four years. She has a gas stove, has not had event hood for four years. People don't have safe living conditions inside. How can they worry about what's going on outside? I really think you guys could benefit from having some type of Citizens Advisory Committee where people can take things to them and then maybe bring them to you. Because people are struggling and suffering out here. They're exhausted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else on my right side like to... Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Name and address for the record, please.
Ray Muhammad, West Poplar Street. Good evening, board members. I want to start off by saying, Ms. O'Connor, I agree 100% with what you said to me in a meeting a year and a half or two years ago about the culture of Griffin Police Department being corrupt and that you did not trust the leadership of the Griffin Police Department to select an individual from among the department. Now, I would like to add also with that, I may want to make an amendment. It's not really the leadership anymore, per se. I think it's the carryover from the past leadership. What I witnessed and what hundreds of thousands of people have witnessed on Saturday was absolutely atrocious. I would like for all of the white people, this is another black gay, it's a black and white thing, to think with me for a moment, if that was your son... Think with me for a moment, all of the Caucasians that are in this room. Think for me for one moment, if that was your son, irregardless to what your son did, if that was your son. See, this is the clear reality that we live with daily, that y'all do not live with. You don't have the conversations that our community have with our children that we have to have to talk for them. We have to let them know how to handle themselves when they're dealing with the police department. You understand? What happened to Dre can never happen again, regardless to his past and what you're doing now, Griffin Police. You're smearing the brother's name to justify actions we think was unbecoming of what took place. That brother was in a prone position, prone position. And are you telling me that the officer is that incompetent that they cannot arrest? Put 115, 20, 30-pound black male in handcuffs and then to brutally beat him? Now, I want the white people to understand, if that was your child on the ground, you're witnessing this, your child get beat. Because that's how we heard it. And we are not going to allow... And I want the police to... The chief is back there. Both chiefs are there. The city manager, I'm going to say it unequivocally, that there needs to be whatever the outcome of this is. After the investigation is over, we're hoping that there is a good conclusion. Or what you're going to do is have me lift my voice in ways that I don't want to do that. I don't want to do that. To the city manager, I agree with you. I agree. You got rogue cops back here. I had issues with them last time I was here, stopping me when I had little boys with me. Them back there. So I close with this right here. We say enough is enough, and we're not going to take this type of foolishness anymore.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Is there anybody else on my right side like to come before the board? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward. You're welcome. Welcome. Name and address, please.
Nicky Starks. Nicky Starks.
And your address, ma'am?
Sir.
Your address.
337 Red Wolf Road, here in Griffin.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm also here on behalf of Dre. That incident happened outside my daughter's bedroom window, which also, a year and a half ago, my 10-year-old grandson was put in handcuffs at Moore Elementary, and that has triggered him. He never wants to go outside. You know, we went to, we ran into brick walls trying to get assistance with my grandson being put in handcuffs at 10-years-old, at 10-years-old at Moore Elementary from a police officer that was not even supposed to be at Moore. So Dre's incident has also risen all concerns for my grandson and his well-being. Mr. Holberg, I think he talked to you at his school, at New Horizon, New Direction, because it bothers him. And that incident has triggered him again. He does not want to go outside. He does not want to have any affiliation with the police at all. And he's 12 now. And nothing was done with that situation with the school board nor the police department that was closed, saying the police need more training. And that particular police officer has been on the force over 20 years. So yes, enough is enough, and we are tired.
Thank you, Ms. Starks. Is there anybody else on my left or right that would like to come before the board? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening. Your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Dorothea Casey. My address is 1707 Westminster Circle, here in Griffin.
Thank you, Ms. Casey.
Mm-hmm. I lived here all my life. I am the mother of Andre Casey. And I just came to speak, you know, because I know with, you know, all these allegations and all that, neither here nor there, that wasn't my concern. My concern was the beating from the officer. So I'm not trying to justify, you know, anything, you know, with his past or what he had going on. I just feel like on the behalf, you know, of him and any other young man, nobody's perfect. You know, everybody has a past. But nobody should be in prone position, cops, two cops with their knee in his back, and then the other cop moving another cop out of the way, striking him in the head first and then in his ribs afterward. So when I went to the hospital, what concerned me, I did ask the sergeant. I said, "Well, you know, someone sent me the video. Did you all have to punch him like that?" He said it was necessary. But he also told me that the cop called him and said, "Sergeant, we had to throw a few real punches. Was that okay?" For him to tell me that the officer called him and let him know they had to throw real punches, to me, that wasn't okay. I mean, why would he have to call if that's okay, you know? So that constantly went, you know, run over and over with me, you know, because I'm like... I mean, there has been some doubt in him for him to call his sergeant and ask, you know, "Was that okay?" So like I said, you know, my child is not perfect. I know that. But if it was a child that hadn't had, you know, the allegation that my son Andre had, I would still be here, standing in that child's place. So whether the color doesn't have anything to do with it either, I still would be here, standing in that child's place with that young man or woman or whomever. So that is all, you know, I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Casey.
Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome. You can come on forward. Welcome. Name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
My name is Kenyatta Gatlin, 613 West...
I'm sorry, first name.
Kenyatta Gatlin, 613 West Layton Avenue. I'm coming on behalf of the young man Dre also. I don't personally know him personally, but I don't have to know him to feel what's right and what should be done to the people that cause any problems, issues. I'm speaking because I'm also a Navy veteran. I was a military police officer. And when I went to boot camp and went to training, there were procedures, laws, policies, and procedures, laws, and policies and things that we do when we're trying to detain someone or when we're trying to handle a situation or to de-escalate a situation. The only difference is between me and a police officer in the street, a civilian, and I'm military. But there's no difference because we have to still follow the same rules. Only thing is, like I said, I'm just in the military. So when I saw the video, I felt the same, probably the same thing that everybody else felt. You know, for one, being an African-American male, a black man, you know what I'm saying? And you have to deal with things on a daily basis and then be profiled to a certain extent. You don't, you get that all the time, and you get tired of it, you know? So my thing was why I'm standing is because I'm just wondering, like I said, I'm a military veteran. And whenever I had to use my weapon or anything on my belt, I have more than one thing on my belt before I go to a gun that I didn't see an officer with the gun. But they said he had a gun. I didn't see it. But before I get to my gun, if I ever drew my gun, I would have to stand in front of the board and explain why I drew my gun because that is my last option. That should always be my last option to use. And with that, I have a baton, I have a taser, I have handcuffs. I have so many different things on my belt to detain someone without me even having to punch someone. And there's a move that we do in training to, that will make someone to comply with me. I don't have to punch him. There's a move that I can do to make someone get down. And you're going to get down. You won't have a choice because it's going to make you weak to get down. So that's why I'm saying I'm not understanding the whole point of... It's very disturbing to see an officer punch somebody in the head. It's like they say, it's three officers. It's two of y'all could have handled that one man. But it was three of y'all. And then two of you decided to be on his back, like his mom said, to be on his back. That's enough weight on him. Where's he going? And you're punching him, telling him to give him... What can he do? You're punching him. He can't do anything. So therefore, that's what I'm saying. You have way, there could have been other things you could have done before you physically punched that man. And that was very disturbing. So like I said, the only difference in me and them, I'm a Navy veteran and they're civilian. But I was also a police, so I know steps too that I would have to do if that was me in their position. So I feel like that's what should have taken place also. I don't remember all the things because I've been out since 2018, but I served eight years in. I served eight years in the military, but I still remember some things. It comes like, it's like, it comes back to memory. So the same thing with them. They went through a training as well.
Yes, ma'am. Your time is up. I'm sorry.
Well, I hope you take consideration what I said.
Thank you for your service, ma'am. Is there anybody in the audience like to come before the board? Yes, welcome.
My name is Carolyn Bell.
Okay, Ms. Bell. And your address, please.
128 Coach Drive. And I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm new to these meetings. And of the issues that I've heard that are brought forth, how are we to know what the investigations, the resolutions, outcomes, and all that are? Are we updated on those investigations here at future meetings? Or how do we know what the progress is of all these concerns?
So if this type of citizen comments can make comments and then we don't make it as...
Yeah, but comments...
I understand, I understand. But our staff, through the investigation, will release information.
Oh, at future meetings here?
Well, not necessarily this meeting, but through press releases and things, through policies.
Oh, okay. So like in the news...
This is a business meeting, so we take feedback in terms of citizens' comment, but we have an agenda in terms of conducting the business of the city. But there will be, as information is released, it will be released through press releases and based on what the city staff...
Oh, so it would be in the newspapers? You're saying press releases?
News media, social media.
Oh, okay.
And things like that.
Oh, all right.
Does that make sense, maybe?
Yeah. I mean, I don't follow social media.
Yes, ma'am. I understand.
So I was just wondering what methods...
It's an ongoing investigation, so we're here to listen and...
But they will be reported on once there's some resolutions and the progress and all that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for being here. Is there anybody else that'd like to come before the board? Okay. Thank you all for your concerns, and we will take everything into account. Moving into the Consent Agenda, we have items three and four. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole?
Make a motion. Second.
Commissioner Tinsley with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor of the consent agenda, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Moving into the regular agenda. Item five is to consider independent contractor services agreement with Griffin E. Trey Howell III in the amount of $72,000 maximum per year for the City of Griffin Municipal Court Judge for a two-year term.
Make a motion.
We have a motion of Commissioner Murray.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor of the contract, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Item six is to consider agreement with Sam Sara Inc., current vendor, for additional vehicle gateway licenses in the amount of $857.32 for an initial term of 12 months for three vehicles in the Information Technology Department.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor of the agreement, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. And that is our agenda for tonight. So moving into City Manager Report.
First, thank you for a very productive workshop today. I enjoyed that we changed it up a little bit from your past. I think it was more beneficial for me to hear from all of you first. So directors that are here, get ready. You have a lot to do. So that was a good thing. Secondly, on Monday, yesterday, we went to the Capitol to receive a Plan First Award. So congratulations to Michelle Haynes and Eva Morales in our Planning and Development Department, as well as the other departments that actually go through the comprehensive plan. We don't set it on a shelf. We go through it and actually make projects happen that are in that plan. And we were recognized as only the eighth city in the state to receive the award three times. There has not been a city to receive it four times. So we would like to be the first ones to do that. It is a three-year designation, so we have this for another three years, and then they will already start working on making sure that we're the first, fourth city. So congratulations to them. Also to Ms. Ward, a certificate of dedication is just that. It shows her ability to sit through classes, learn information, and bring that back to us. I'm very glad that she does that and keeps us all on track with the same thing. And then last but not least, congratulations to Bradley. I'm not sure that he's still here. But Bradley is a rock star. He does anything that we could possibly need as far as GIS and IT and has created all kinds of apps that I don't understand when he talks about them, but I just go to him when I have questions and say, "Can you help me?" So a huge asset to the city. I love seeing that he came up as an intern before he even graduated from college, then came back and worked for us full-time and is one of our rock stars. So very thankful for him. That's it.
Wonderful. Mr. Whalen?
I have nothing.
Mr. McCord? Mr. Wright?
Nothing.
Mrs. Murray?
No comment tonight.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yeah. I got a comment.
Go ahead.
Well... My heart goes out to the mother and to the family because they saw what I saw. I don't know what else took place... I don't know what else took place before then, but I know what I saw. And once he was in restraint, I don't think those punches should have been given. I know that there's good officers, and we know that there are bad officers.
Right.
There are good citizens, and there are bad citizens. And what I saw, it put me in tears.
Yeah.
I'm almost in tears now.
Right.
Because I have a son, and I have five grandsons. And what I'm asking is just do the right thing. Right is right, and wrong is wrong.
Facts.
If you have a police officer that's out of control, fix it.
Yeah.
Because we all got to live in this city together.
That's right.
And we don't want the young men's and young girls of any color being afraid of the cops. Do your job, protect and serve. That was wrong.
Right.
And I didn't, I don't see any right in it. I don't know what the outcome would be, but it was wrong.
Thank you, Ms. Curtis.[1778.16][1778.16](applause). Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Tensley. Again, thank you all for being here tonight, and please feel free, we all have an open-door policy. If you ever feel like you'd like to talk to us, please reach out to us. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I will.
Commissioner Ward with motion, second by Commissioner Tensley. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand, and see you all.